...City Council Special Meeting to order for August 14, 2018. If you would please rise for our invocation followed by our pledge of allegiance and Texas. Amen. Father in heaven, we give you tonight's meeting. May you have your special guidance over this meeting. May you protect and continue to bless the city of Florisville and may we always look up to you for the guidance and direction that we may need. We thank you in the name of Jesus Christ, our Savior. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
We do have a floor for tonight's meeting. In attendance, Councilman David Johns, Councilwoman Gloria Kid too, myself, Mayor Sissy Gonzalez-Dippel, Councilman Juan Ortiz, Councilman Nick Neeson, and Councilman Gerard Jimenez. Thank you. At this time, we'll open the floor to any citizens' comments. Would you make this a big... If not, we will move on to item 1A, consideration and action to order the general election on June the 6th, 2018. I will turn this over to our City Attorney.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council members. As you know, the election is coming up pretty quick and there are some deadlines for someone to the Secretary of State that we have to meet. One of those deadlines is that the council or mayor in particular have to go ahead and call a general election. Deadline on that is August the 20th. So that is why that is number one, because the council needs to go ahead and vote on that and you need to declare that, you know, by August the 20th, that we will have a general election coming November the 6th, 2018. Okay? That's the first thing.
Okay, and that goes in with the handout that you gave us with the ordinance?
Yes, but the ordinance basically will outline the deadlines and I'm going to go over them real quickly so that the council members will know. Okay, so as everybody is aware and the council is aware, we have an election that's coming up on November the 6th, 2018. Those that will be on the ballot in our upper election will be Honorable Mayor, also Council Member Place 1, and Council Member Place 2, that would be Honorable Council Member Neeson and Honorable Council Member Johns. Okay, so we have to go ahead and designate that the general election is going to take place. That's the number one thing that we have to do. Then according to the Secretary of State, our city secretary will have to give notice of basically the deadline to put your name on the ballot. And I believe that that is also August the 20th is the deadline for anyone that wants to come in and sign up to be on the ballot. Let me see, what else do I have on here? And then also, we have to establish a deadline for drawing names as to the direction, as to how they will be placed on the ballot, and that's under Section 5. It cannot be earlier than August the 23rd, but it cannot be later than August the 27th. Okay? Then what I put under Section 6 is basically to deal with the ballot box here so that we can follow all the procedures that are in place by the Texas Election Code and how we should store that and how those should be sealed. That's what I put under Section 6. Under Section 7, that basically outlines the date of early voting, which will start on Monday, October the 22nd, and then will end on November the 2nd, 2018. I've put on there, I'm taking the liberty, basically, and this is a draft, I have put early voting clerk as the mayor and the council is aware that the early voting clerk for the city of Florisville would be our city secretary, and I have put in their Ms. Cordova's name in there. Early voting location, as we spoke about last week during one of our meetings, early voting location can be the city hall, so I've taken the liberty of putting on their city of Florisville, city hall, and the street address. Of course, like I've indicated, this is a draft, this is subject to change after today's meeting. Under Section 8, basically it designates that on November the 6th, which is election day, we have to have a box. It has to be joined with the county. Okay? So I put down under Section 8. And then basically, basically, the rest of it goes on to placing notices and giving appropriate notices, and I've asked that this ordinance, if it is passed, take effect there and be effective immediately.
Now, on the day when the drawing will be done, is that a different agenda item? Or do we have to, is that included in on this?
I think it would be included in on this one because it does deal with the general election, which is scheduled to take place on the November 6th, 2018 ballot. And my ordinance basically gives you the dates on which that should be conducted on. It says no earlier than August 23rd and no later than August 27th.
So we do, do we need to be specific on the dates?
I would. It would be best if you could say that it will be held on this day and make sure that it is between those days, please.
And just to note, council, that is on, the 23rd is on a Thursday, and the 27th is on a Monday.
It would be also, Mayor, if the council and yourself could designate the date, and then that way I can make that arrange, I can make that change on this, on the draft.
Okay.
Just keep in mind, no earlier than the 23rd and no later than 27th.
Does Council have...
No, this doesn't have, I mean, y'all agree on what they're running for, does it? What do we have then?
The 23rd is a Thursday, otherwise you're looking at Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and then to Monday, so I would suggest the 23rd.
The 23rd, Mayor, I agree, is posted, City Council meeting. That would be also part of the City Council agenda, that it would be posted with your City Council.
Okay.
So I'm going to put on here, I will make the following change, Mayor.
Do we need to vote on this?
Let me just give you my proposed changing of wording, if that's fine with the council. Since the City Council for the city of Florisville here directs City Secretary to conduct a drawing for order of names on the ballot on, and then I'm going to put on August the 23rd, 2018. The rest of the verbiage, I will scratch out, if that is under the council.
What section is that on?
Section 5, page 2. And then the next, well, okay, I guess that would be, what would be applicable to subsection 8?
Now, I have a question as far as the early voting clerk. Are we changing that?
Well, the old early voting clerk will be the city secretary for the city of Florisville. My understanding is that there was some moves today, but I had already drafted it and put in Ms. Monica Cordova in there because that's who I had been dating with, Mayor. If there is a name change, I can change that as well.
Just a second. Yes, we can change the name to Monica Neeson. Our Assistant City Secretary is now our City Secretary. Should we take the notice?
I have a question. Is that B, L, I, Z, or S?
B, L, I, Z.
Thank you very much for that, Councilman, so I can make that correction.
Now, can we approve this before we approve item B?
No, we can go ahead and basically deal with item A, that will be, Mayor, for you to go ahead and call the general election for November 6th, 2018.
This question. That's already settled on that, on that date, it's going to be at the county?
Yes.
At the county?
We don't know yet where.
What we don't know yet is on election day, November the 6th, that is the election day, it has to be done at the county. Okay? But on early voting, which starts Monday, October the 22nd to November the 2nd, the council has the liberty of deciding whether to call that. The council can decide either to go into it in county places, or you can decide to have it in city hall. That is something for the council to decide, and that actually would be probably subsection B.
So, but the question was, should we approve item B, excuse me, item A before B?
Yes, I will.
I'm going to move to go ahead and talk about the order to general election on November the 6th. Has that said in that?
With those corrections?
Yes. For...
On, on Section 5?
Yes.
Yes, both sections motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Do I have any citizens' comments pertaining to this? Okay, if not, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Five, zero, thank you. Moving on to item B, consideration and action to approve the early voting location for November the 6th, 2018 general election. Back to our City Attorney.
Okay, Madam Mayor, and that will be covered under subsection, or Section 7, and I put city of Florisville, city hall, but that is something, like I've indicated, this is a draft. The ordinance that I gave you is a draft, it's a work in progress, and that is something to be decided by you, Mayor, and the council this evening.
My biggest question is, because of the change today, are we up to date on election procedures and or laws by the city secretary?
Yes, we have, we've met with Olga, and I've met with the City Attorney, Mr. Neeson as well. Monica Neeson has been speaking and everything that's going on as we go forward, those things and we just do that. We see the ballot boxes that, and we have bought the procedure, and we should keep on with the election.
Any other questions, Ms. Council?
I'd like to know, to keep the whole world happy in Florisville, can we have two early voting locations, one with the county and one at the city hall, to keep everybody happy?
That is something that I looked into. I think that usually when that is done, Councilman, is when the city population is like over 400,000, and I don't think that we're there yet, something in the future.
No, but that is, was suggested in there, but it never said it couldn't.
Exactly.
So it could if we wanted to.
I would say so. I think that, I knew that according to the election code, it indicates that early voting is maintained where you have your city clerk, your city secretary, and that is under, and I wrote this on there, I think it's subsection 83, it's Section 83, 002 and 83, 005, and that deals with your, it says main early voting polling place, and that's where it indicates that it's preferable, it says in the election in which the city secretary is the early voting clerk. The main early voting polling place shall be located in any room selected by the early voting clerk in the building that houses the main business office of the city secretary as appointed. However, if the city governing body determines that locating the polling place in that building is impractical, then at that point, the city governing body will designate a different location in the city.
So, right now, if we put it all in the city hall, everybody's going to have to go to the county for early voting, then come down to the city hall for early voting?
It does appear so.
So...
That's a possibility, yes.
So technically, we could have one of both to keep everybody happy?
I think that you can, because even though it says that it is to be held in city hall, then you've got subsection 85, 062, and it talks about temporary branch polling places.
Right.
And then it talks about where you could even have it in another location as well. They don't want it to be a mobile location and stuff of that nature, but I think that's not what the council would be looking at, putting it in a mobile location.
Because I just look at a lot of the seniors that get out of their car at the county, and got to get back in the car and go down if we just had it in both places. Some people just may want to vote on the city. A lot of people, with the turnouts we have, may want to vote for both, so to me, it'd be logical to have it both places.
And what I went ahead and, I put an early voting location, but like I indicated, Councilman Neeson, that's up to the council, it's a draft. If you decide to have it in two places, that's up to you. If you decide to have it in city hall pursuant to our election vote, we can do that.
If that is up to the council, are you able to give any figures on that?
Yes, I think that there were a lot of figures, I passed it out today, which is the same figure, so if you pass down, it looks like this.
So we're going to be adding, what I gather, if we go strictly from the county to the city hall, we're going to be adding another $2,260 to it?
If I can let these numbers go together by our city secretary.
So Monica, can you walk them through, so we can make sure that you're having the right numbers?
So if you look at the top of the page, it'll say what fiscal year you're looking at. Of course, your fiscal year 2014, 2015 was a $25,250, so being course that, everything that you see listed there is expenses that was paid out for election purposes that year, whether it be for supplies, maintaining, you know, the boxes or having them serviced, and also includes any contract laborers that were hired to work the election for us. If you move on to 2015, 2016, you do see an increase, it goes to $27,642.10. If we move to 2016, 2017, and we come back down to $21,883.57. For 2017, 2018, the current fiscal year that we're in, the only thing that's been expensed out of there is $2,260.76. The very last page, the one that is highlighted, which is Jan. Hart of Walton County, that is the fee that we paid to the county for holding the election for us last year, the
So, we paid to the county last year, 7,100...
The county did not invoice us until after the election was held, so that's why you see it posted in January of 2018.
Okay. So, if we, it doesn't make any sense when you have 16, 17, 21,000, 2016, 17. Is that due to the county due, or is that the city stuff? That's all city is?
That is all city expenses.
So...
2016, 2017 actually has two pages to it.
And so Monica, just opening up for a question. So I know it was actually billed at the January, so we have a 2017, 2018, that was for the formal election. The 13 plus the $2,260, is that correct?
Yes.
So, Councilman, you would add the $13,677.74, and you would add that to the $2,260.76.
Actually, Mrs. Turner, you're adding the $7,127.41.
13.
13, I'm sorry, the $7,127.41 and the $2,260, because that's what they billed us, but they billed us after the election, Jan. Hart, that's the term, so you would add that along with the $2,260.
The county actually did it for $10,000?
That's what it expenses that you asked for, yes.
Okay, so we're going to, if we stay with the county, we're not going to, we're going to save about 17,000, 16?
No.
Because what you're saying, you're saying that the county billed us 7,100 plus 2,200?
That was just, that was just for their services, Councilman Neeson.
Okay.
If you look at 2016, 2017?
That was our services?
That was anything leading up to the election. If you look about three quarters of the way down the page, you'll see that expenses start to pick back up in January, February, and then it jumps over to June, and June is whenever she started preparing for the next upcoming election of that year.
Okay.
So Monica, 2016, 2017, or are you saying, and I'm trying to understand it myself, are you saying that the city paid $21,883.57?
Yes.
How much? Yeah, but you...
But you're adding the 2,000, but those are two different... It goes to two different elections, because we have election almost every year, and so remember, it's, elections happen in November, but September, October, the cost doesn't actually happen, or the action occurred, or invoiced until later. And you know, October 1st is our fiscal year, so some of the things that are mixed to be able to go back and forth, and that's why I needed her to explain, because she doesn't count.
Yeah. So it's probably pretty close.
However, your suggestion, Mr. Neeson, would be that if they host the elections for us, it would be whatever the city would normally cost, and it'd be the additional cost of what we have to pay the county as well? If you took both sides?
Both sides, but we just, I don't know how many people we, you guys got called, but it was ridiculous on the phone after we did, and that's why I decided if we host both spots, because, I don't know about you guys, but...
I got a whole bunch of calls.
I got a whole bunch too. I just want to keep everybody happy. I don't care if we have it at the city hall. I do, if we do, I would like to have it at the county too, because it was ridiculous on phone calls, because everybody wants to go, especially from the seniors, that city hall, get in the car, go up one slot, walk down, get back in the car, and then go home instead of having to get in the car, just get out and go to another store.
It's a lot easier to vote at the city hall for the seniors, because you don't have to walk down that...
But they can vote for the county stuff.
That's why, that's why, Mr. Neeson...
One, one councilman at a time.
That's why people have, we have people going up to the cars and taking the voters to, to say, get off the car.
They still have to go, okay, they still have to go to the county to vote for the county and state, early voting stuff.
We've always done it like that.
Okay, one at a time, and Councilman Johns was next.
I feel for the money, extra money to cost to have it at city hall. Maybe it all should stay at county. It's a lot easier for, you know, just go to one place, instead of voting for the county, one county place, go on to city hall. Try to make people go to two different places, you're wasting time, and plus the round money the city's always spending having in both places, it's not, it's not, I don't see it's worth it to do it.
Well, I think it is, because we threw away nearly $7,000 or $40,000 for that...
Councilwoman, I will remind you that that is another subject that you keep bringing up, and if you want to really go into details about that year, we will, at a future date. But I will tell you that my concern is that the previous city secretary handled it for so many years, and now we have one that has been the city secretary for less than 24 hours. That will be a concern. So, I will let you finish, but I will remind you about what you keep bringing up.
Okay, well, like I said, you know, we're running away some other times.
A point of order.
Hold on.
You don't understand.
Hold on, Councilman.
I said, you've got to be fair with everybody.
I am so, and every time you or somebody brings it up, that's on another subject. So I will remind you...
I was on the same subject, and you haven't addressed me yet.
I was requesting her finish.
That's, that's something else.
Councilwoman?
I'm going to move to approve the election in city hall for everybody, the early voting.
Councilman Neeson, Mr. Turner?
Called at 11:20 this afternoon, for everyone.
Yes, I had something before. My thing is that it's an inconvenience for everybody that lives within the city. We, I don't think we should ever have to be dealing with the county on our city election. Everybody from the county cannot vote on the city election. Anybody from the city cannot vote on the county election. You know, so I think in the near future, that if we host everything at city hall, it would be a better deal for everybody, and before we move it back into May, like the rest of the state and the rest of the country, I don't know why we ever moved it to November. So, with that said...
Okay, and I will refer that over to the attorney.
If I may, if we can stay focused, I think that the item that sits on the agenda is for early voting location. My understanding is that Councilwoman Cantu made a motion, and that's still on the floor, is that correct?
Yes, it's on the floor. Do I have a second?
I'd like to make a question before we go to the second. We have state elections and county elections at this time, and that's why I wanted to go two places, because I live in the city, I get to direct vote on the county, I get to vote on the state, I get to vote all three places. That's why I wanted two locations.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Okay, is this motion on the floor now? Is it for city only?
I think the motion, if I'm correct, was to hold early voting at city hall.
Only?
Yes. For early voters.
I'll second the motion.
I have a second. Any citizens' comments?
Discussion, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I just want to say that council, that we should take the head, get the pass, and move on forward. City hall is our home. That's our home. Regardless, regardless, you know, county, I can understand some people want to vote for county and state and person and all this, but our home, our home is city hall. And like I said before, we maybe prior council made that mistake to move it out of city hall. That's the past, let's move forward and do what is right. I can understand the left side and the right side. I mean, we should come home. Our voters, our voters should come home to city hall where they vote, for decades and decades, they voted there, no complaints, no nothing to, they sway away. So let's concentrate back on, going back home. That's my point. Madam Mayor?
Thank you. I have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, three to two. Moving on to item 1C, consideration and action to approve the election day voting locations pursuant to Texas Election Code and Secretary of State requirements.
And that pretty much, Honorable Mayor, is with the county. We don't have options. It's just to advise, basically, council and the public that during the election day our voting locations won't be with the county in their polling places.
They did, did they set the polling locations, I think they did in Commissioners Court yesterday?
The only one that I know that I had indicated to me that they had already established was American Legion.
Yes.
Do you know the other ones, Mr. Turner?
American Legion, and they're going to do it at the administrative building as well, right there by the school's building. Those voting units, that was the second location.
And then that third location is at the show barn?
The third location at the show barn.
Okay. Okay, any questions by the council?
I have a comment, Madam Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Right, and this is what I'm talking about. Here we have three locations. One over here, one over there, and one over yonder. People get confused, people get disoriented, and that takes away the right, the right for that individual to, to vote. And once they, they get confused and everything, they just pack up and leave, don't even vote. Regardless, if you're on this side or that side, that vote is gone. And there have been some close races before, ladies and gentlemen, that a voter too does matter, so that, that is why I'm saying we should come back home and vote. So our city voter would always know exactly where to go, early voting and election day. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Neeson, go ahead.
And the only people that are going to be in convenience is precinct one, because they're the ones, from A, that way, are going to be in convenience, because they're the ones that are going to know where to go. The rest of the city knows that they go to city hall, but not precinct one.
What else, and this is to the attorney's...
And that's not fair.
Can we go and vote outside the county, outside the city? Because show barn is out in the county.
My understanding is that it's supposed to be within our municipality.
So we can't use...
The show barn location does not anything to do with the city of Florisville. Those are the designated locations.
For the county?
As we join with the...
No, we're asking just city only.
City only, it's two locations, which is the administrative building...
And American Legion.
And American Legion. I have to be careful, there is a box, it does sit out somewhere, so the county has notified where you officially have to go, but those are the three locations that they know that they'll be voting on election day.
If it is something that the individuals out there can vote for the city, then you have to have a city box.
But show barn is not in the city, and we had a problem with that the last time.
That's out on the county. We need to look into that.
What is it?
The city hall has, the city has 21 addresses that are on the other side of 181 that are in the third precinct that they found out last year, and they're the ones to go up to the show barn to vote. There's only 21 houses over there, and they had to go, they found that last year, and they brought it up last year.
And based on the map that you will have approved for annexation, that will be resolved next year?
Yeah, but this year, we still have the 21 houses that will need to go out there.
But officially, the county has determined where they will vote.
Right.
Any other questions or comments? Any citizens' comments? Any citizens' comments? Okay, if not, I will entertain a motion.
So, Madam Mayor?
I have a council, I mean, excuse me, I have a motion on the floor by Councilman Ortiz to approve election day voting locations pursuant to Texas election code and Secretary of State requirements. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilman Jimenez. All those in favor, please raise your right hand.